Do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Yes, it is.
Sorry, am I not speaking?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show that we've adopted the consent agenda. Next, we have comments from citizens present on non-agenda items and agenda items. Also, I'd like to change the agenda slightly in that if citizens would like to make comments, that they do it during this portion of the meeting. There won't be time at the end of the meeting for citizen comments, so I only have one person that is interested, but if there's any others after he is finished, we'll go ahead and do that. Mark Christie?
Hi, I'm Mark Christie, 3184 Northeast Loop Drive. I didn't have the opportunity. I thought about this last board meeting and I didn't get a chance to say it, but I wanted to commend the board. In the last six to seven months, you guys have made so much positive progress in moving forward and making decisions. It's refreshing to see, and I know that Neighborhood Association, which I'm a part of, is excited to see the movement forward and making decisions. I know we've got a lot on the table. The Aeration Project is a great start and the decisions you made at last month's meeting to start that process with Dr. Horn and, you know, expend that $3,000, still knowing that there's a possibility we may get into this a little bit and decide that we want to put the brakes on. And Brian, you did a great job in the part about the letter, which I haven't seen yet, but the cover letter to Dr. Horn saying that, you know, we wanted some hard stops in there if we determine, and you guys determined it's not the appropriate way to go. But I wanted to correct, congratulate the board for what you've done so far. You guys have made monumental progress and we're looking forward to that continued progress going forward, so I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have no other citizens signed up. Is there anyone that didn't get a chance to sign up would like to speak? All right. We'll go to unfinished business. Doubles Lake Plan, Paul?
Great. Just like to bring your attention to the Septic Sewer Section just briefly. City Council's planning a sewer workshop on April 4th at 3:00 to 5:00 PM in these chambers. It's going to be a City Council Planning Commission meeting. District's been asked to participate as their lake manager, and certainly a sewer committee would certainly be interested. Obviously, anybody can attend and certainly open to the public, and it's a public meeting. The Voyage Lake LID is obviously moving-
Can I ask where is that located?
Here at these chambers, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Voyage Lake LID is moving forward. I don't have any specific updates, but that's certainly a major project. The 19th Street Reimbursement District, the municipal one, was formed. It's actually now complete already. The first property owner's already hooked up, so that's really progressing well. And then the city made us aware of, just recently, they're having, they're looking at starting another municipal reimbursement district on Southeast Keel where property owners come forward with a failed septic system and they're looking at possibly forming a reimbursement district there. And one other note, the Public Works Department is looking at allocating about $300,000 annually to kind of service these types of projects, so that's an opportunity to see some of these continue. And let's update.
Paul, on the sewer workshop, were you asked to make a presentation?
Yeah, I was asked to be part of that presentation.
Any specific topic or?
Yeah, you know, basically servicing the kind of same element that I did at the Public Works meeting, Public, American Public Works Association meeting, introducing the lake, introducing the topics around the lake, and then turning it over to the city and/or their engineers to introduce the actual pre-design report and that's us.
Good.
Thank you.
Also, you know, let me say that the sewer lines are all in and the Voyage LID and their pressure testing, I don't, do you know if they're done with the testing?
The last I heard, they weren't done yet. That was a conversation I had earlier in the week with the city engineer, so.
But they had a hole that they found, that they were looking for.
They may be, yeah. I don't know the results of the pressure testing. Obviously, if they were done, then, yeah, that's the reason to do the pressure testing. We sure they've got it secured.
Very good. You want to talk a little bit about the Lake Steward Award?
Yeah, well, we offered this award. We didn't get any nominations in time to get them in the staff report. We did later receive one from Bill Sexton. It says here, "I would like to nominate Steve Brown for the Steward Award this year. He promotes the lake with a positive attitude in his personal and professional life." Thanks, Bill. So that was sent to all the board members.
Right.
I would like to make a nomination if it's not too late.
Okay.
You know, last year I had mentioned that I thought this year would be the best time to do it, but I'd like to recommend that we, that Brian Green received the Lake Steward Award for all of his work with the Voyage Sewer Project, the countless hours that he put in putting that together, which has really worked to, you know, kick off an entire movement for sewer around the lake for the first time in the last 40 years, so I think it's a huge step forward in nutrient abatement and will be, you know, a huge positive step for the watershed, so I'd like to see Brian get it, so.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other nominations from the board? Discussion, other discussion? Shall we vote? Do you want to, what's the best way to vote on this?
You can do it either, you can have a ballot, you just have to announce who voted for who. I mean, you can have ballots that can't be secret ballots. You can just do a voice call, you know, you can say, it's really up to you however you want to do it.
Let's do a voice call. I'll start. I just think Brian Green would be a good candidate.
Brian?
Brian.
Steve?
I'll abstain.
Let it be known that Brian Green is our Lake Steward Award winner for this year. Great.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Been very rewarding, without any accolades, to work on that project and be a part of this district for so many years, so.
I have a question, Brian, with regards to that. Similar to Kent and all of the effort he's put into his shoreline restoration and the permit process, is the work that you did something that, like these people on Southeast Keel can take that recipe and say, "We want to do this"?
Yeah.
Is it just a matter of now taking that idea and moving it to neighborhoods that desire it?
Yeah, you can move it. It works, that's the beauty of the low-pressure sewer system.
Right, but you had several hurdles to get through along the way. I mean, the system is the system, but the hurdles that you came through, I'm assuming that, or I'm hoping, I guess, that other neighborhoods are not going to have to go through quite the hurdles that you did.
Oh, I think, I don't think that could be any clearer. Really, the city had to go through a real learning process to be comfortable in adopting a whole new form of sewer system that, you know, previously had not been used in this area, and that really elongated every step of the process. The city had really not had a serious, large LID proposal before, so this was all new. The formation of the LID, the process of getting the engineering report ahead of that or after they gave preliminary approval, that was, that was a new step that had, you know, that took us probably a year there for the engineer just to get up to speed. And then, yeah, every step of the process took longer because it was the first time. But in the process, the city had sent representatives to the Puget Sound area to really, to learn about the system and to figure out that it really does work and to understand how it works and understand how it would affect their sewer lines and their treatment plan. And they have all that knowledge now, and that's why they're, they're really, they're much less reluctant to move forward with sewer in much larger areas of Lincoln City and places outside of Lincoln City, namely the east side of the lake.
Great. Look forward to seeing all those things in place.
Right.
So that award's given away on April 30th at the Communities Banquet, so you're invited to be a guest of the district with a plus-one, and somebody typically gives that award away from the district. It's been myself, it's been other board members in the past as well, so put that on your calendar, please, April 30th, 6 o'clock, I think, shouldn't it?
I'll be there.
Great.
Thank you.
Very good. Cake at the Lake, I think is the next item, or do you have Oregon Lakes Association report?
Oh, that's, you know, Oregon Lakes Association, just as FYI for folks that don't know the organization. It's one that actually started on the shores of Doubles Lake with Bill Isham at the helm at the time of the district, and currently I'm serving as president of that organization, but as Bill did and previous managers. I think the big note is just that, you know, that we're going to be hosting them at the Oregon Coast Community College for a meeting, you know, for the board. And then the conference for the Oregon Lakes Association will be held in the Dells in October, so public's welcome, and you can just go on organlakes.org to find out more information. Oh, and then I skipped over the HABs stakeholder meeting that they, we helped sponsor at OSU in February as well. So those are, those are the two major events, the Lake Association, the volunteer Lake Association, able to put on is the HAB stakeholders training often, and then certainly the conference.
Did you say that Bill Isham started the Oregon Lakes Association?
He was one of the first.
Oh, wow. I didn't know that.
Yeah. So it was actually at the Grass Garp Festival that people from the state around the lake had come to Doubles Lake. Andy Chidell was the first president of the Lake Association, and they thought we should form a statewide lake association, and they did.
How many members are part of that?
It's about 80 or so corporate, probably half a dozen corporate, a lot of mostly individual membership, a few nonprofit, local government-type entities like ourselves. Yeah, it's a pretty hearty organization, certainly folks from Portland State, the Center for Lakes and Reservoir are members, other small lake associations, but consultants as well.
Cake at the Lake celebration?
So, I don't know if everybody knows this, but every four years, the district kind of gets excited on Leap Day and celebrates its birthday because the order of formation was signed on February 29th, and so we had Cake at the Lake to celebrate our eighth birthday after 32 years. And we invited the public to have Cake at the Lake, and it was well-attended. I know Kent, you were there blowing out the candles, that was appreciated, but we also had, the mayor was there, Chester Norak is our city councillor, councillor Lockey, let's see, Ward, Ward was sick, he said, yes, that's right, and Sprague and Anderson, so basically most of the city council was able to come, and 30, 40 other people had come down and talked about their committees that you formed and that sort of thing, and just celebrated the lake for a little hour at lunch there on the 29th.
Yeah, it was well-attended, and we had a nice break in the weather.
Yes.
Let's see.
So the only, last one I would just mention is this Love Your Lincoln. It's the third time that they put this on, and it's basically a training for front-desk type positions in our community, and it's an opportunity for the district to educate those folks about the lake and those type of things that they want to be sharing with their guests and promoting the lake. So that would be April 22nd from 9:00 to 1:00, and we'd have a slot for a presentation in that timeframe, and it's at the Lincoln City Cultural Center.
So it's like hospitality front desk?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And it's free, but you have to RSVP, so if you want to attend, you know, you're welcome. There's a link on the, in the staff report for Love Your Lincoln 3, April 22nd, which is Earth Day, 9:00 to 1:00, and Lincoln City Cultural Center.
I think we can skip over down to Harmful Algal blooms, aeration?
Yeah, so as you know, you've, have a contract now in effect for, with Alex Horn Associates and HBH Consulting Engineers to basically design a aeration system for you. The first Phase 1 of that, though, is this assessment, formal assessment of the 17 methods of lake treatment and five watershed approaches, which then, once you've received that, you'll have a time to review it and decide if you want to move forward. So that, Phase 1 of that contract is in effect, and then should you want to proceed, you have an opportunity to do so with your existing contract for Phase 2, which would be the design of the system.
The one question I had with that, Paul, was are we going to receive a paper copy or is Dr. Horn going to come up and give a presentation?
It'll just be a paper copy, yeah, yeah. You didn't budget for another trip for him. You could, you could look at that, but that wasn't in the budget.
Okay. Great. Let's see, D-River dredging?
Okay, so you've got basically, I'd say 90% of your removal fill permit done. We're just waiting on some feedback to assist in the construction, actually the construction of it, what goes where, when, how, that kind of thing, that, those types of information. Tina was able to provide a second fill site, so we've actually developed that fill site as an option number two. Fill site number one, though, is still, needs to be processed.
Do we have to have, can we, can we scratch number one?
You can, you know, I think you need to, you know, discuss that with a contractor because that was certainly part of, I think, his interest-
No, I'm not suggesting that we do that. I'm just asking, it's not a big deal to just say, "We're going with option two"?
Well, I think it might be to the contractor. So by donating a sign, I think he was making himself avail of some of the-
I've talked to him this week, and I think the consensus was to move things forward. Let's just go with number two for now.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for him.
Sure.
Just FYI.
All right, committees.
So we have, hold that kickoff committee, kickoff thing on Leap Day, as we just discussed, and it's been, gotten some interest through reaching out to all the people that had signed up initially. We had that handout, sign up, and so I reached out to all those folks, and a good percentage of those have responded back with the formal application. Those applications are available on the website as a PDF or as a Word document, if people like to use that, or you can just, you know, sign, hand-sign it and drop it off, or however you want to do that. You've got the Sewer Committee for seven members, the Events Committee for seven members, the Septic Inspection Committees for five members, Save Our Shoreline Water Quality for seven, and this is draft-only. The SOLV Annual Cleanup Aeration Special Districts, A. Dredging Water Level, et cetera, has a possible five members, and there's a mix of property owners and elector positions in each one of those, and some at-large positions in the ones that have seven members, so wide opportunity there. There is a draft resolution that is in your packet to form that potential last committee. If you wanted to do so, you could form that one.
I think we should do that tonight. I would, I would say before we read that, that I think we've had, I have a count of seven different people that have, that we have applications so far for our committees. We need a lot more, so if you are at all interested in volunteering for the district, we have a place for you, and so in order for these committees to work, we need to get as many people as possible involved, and so I think at our next meeting we'll be, have a chance to look at all the applications, form up those committees, and then create those committees from those applicants. So I see us doing that at the next meeting. Right now, we don't have enough applications to really have a committee meeting yet, so as soon as we can get those in, if you're, I know there's a number of faces out in the audience that have said they would volunteer, so let's get your applications in right now.
And your friends and neighbors.
Right, right. We will not turn down any help. And really, for Doubles Lake Water Improvement District to accomplish the things that we have, have a vision for, we need as many people in the community involved in these as possible. If, the more people are involved, the faster these things move forward, and it just, it steamrolls because of that. So I encourage you, both in the audience and out on television, if you haven't signed up for a committee or interested in helping out, please do so as soon as possible. It is, yes.
Yeah, it's up front on the homepage. I would, I noticed that Mitchell proposed, you know, getting the word out in the, in your newsletter to the DLNA. So you're, so you're going to do that with, okay, that'd be great. I think that would help a lot.
Thank you, Mitch. Well, we should go ahead and formally look at the draft resolution for our last committee, and, let's see, which part should I read? The Establishment and Purpose, Membership, and then I think Powers were the three things. Everything else is similar to the other committees, so. Board of Directors Resolution 2016-06, the Establishment and Governance of the Doubles Lake Water Improvement District, SOLV, Annual Lake Cleanup Aeration Special Projects, which include dredging, water level, et cetera, Committee. It'll take on a lot, so hey, get involved. It needs some people. Establishment and Purpose. Be it resolved that the SOLV Aeration Special Projects Committee of the Doubles Lake Water Improvement District is hereby established for the purpose of, one, develop or coordinate with SOLV, a voluntary annual lake cleanup around Doubles Lake; two, providing information and communication relevant to the aeration project, D-River dredging, and water level around Doubles Lake to stakeholders and seeking relevant input from stakeholders; three, voluntary committee will bring forward to the DLWID Board of Directors any special projects that it determines should be discussed by the DLWID Board for consideration; also, level of stakeholder support for the items; and, four, reporting its findings to the DWLID Board of Directors. The committee is advisory to the DLWID Board of Directors and shall be considered a public body for the purposes of Oregon Public Meetings Law and shall be subject to all the provisions of that law as embodied in ORS 192.610 through ORS 192.690. The committee is advisory to the Doubles Lake Water Improvement District Board of Directors and shall be considered a public body for the purposes of the Oregon Public Meetings Law and shall be subject to all the provisions of the law as embodied in ORS 192.160 through Membership. The committee shall consist of five members. The board shall appoint persons who meet the qualifications under this, of this subsection. Lincoln County voter registration records may be used to determine residency, as may the Lincoln County assessor's records. Qualifications. One, one member shall be appointed from the Doubles Lake Water Improvement District Board of Directors. Two, the other four members of the committee shall be property owners in the district and/or electors of the district, meaning they are eligible voters residing in the district's boundaries. C, any committee member may be removed from the committee by a majority vote of the DLWID Board of Directors. And D, officers, the committee, the committee member shall nominate, elect a chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary treasurer, and assign the duties of each such officer. Skipping down to powers, that's the only other difference between all the committees. The committee shall have all the powers reasonably necessary and appropriate to initiate actions to carry out its purposes, subject to the approval of the board. Prior approval of committee action by the board shall not be required, provided, however, any committee member may request board approval or disapproval of the action before or after the action. Any action of the committee or its members shall be presumed to be within the power of the committee unless specifically disapproved by the board. So, do I hear a second to adopt our Resolution 2016-06?
I'll second, but I have a comment.
Okay, good.
Yeah, just for the sake of making it simple, can we just call it the Special Projects Committee?
I have no problem.
You know, everything else is nice and short, and, you know, it's kind of, you know, it's a paragraph title, and I was just thinking, you know, to keep it short and sweet. I mean, special projects with all the same stuff underneath it, but, you know, just to kind of keep the title a little bit in line with everything else. Other than that, I'm-
So would that be changed after, just as the title of the committee?
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, the scope of the committee wouldn't change, just make it Special Projects.
Well, it might be broader. We don't want it limited to SOLV, annual cleanup, aeration, dredging, water level. I'm joking.
Is everybody, is there any other discussion with that?
I'm fine with it.
You, well, then do you have to change the statement of purpose in the, or just change the statement of purpose to say the same thing? Right after be resolved?
So with discussed changes to special projects, do I hear a second to the adoption of Board of Directors Resolution 2016-06?
I think you had a second.
So you have to withdraw the first.
Okay, I'll withdraw.
Oh, okay.
I'll withdraw the first adoption.
I'll make a motion we accept Resolution 2016-06 as titled, "Special Projects As Disgusted."
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Let it be known that we passed Resolution 2016-06.
And you want to go back to the other committees and accept those applications, or do we need to do that?
I think we, why don't we expedite things and entertain everybody next time?
Okay.
Since we don't have enough, really, to-
We don't have enough to form a quorum on my committee, so.
Sure, okay. Keep them coming.
Yes, yes. So by next board meeting, our April board meeting, if you are interested in a committee, please get your application in, and we will start formation of those committees and set meeting dates at that time.
Great.
Let's see, somehow I've gotten-
Yeah, mine.
Under new business, do any board members have new business?
I don't.
No, I...
I have one. As all the board members know, we've met in executive session to discuss our lake, her lake manager, and also where we're headed as a board. And after much consideration, I'd like to make a motion that the manager's employment agreement with our lake manager, Paul Robertson, in accordance with Section 8 of our agreement, that we agree that we move forward with termination of our contract with outcause between the district and Mr. Robertson, according to the terms set forth in Section 8. That's my motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of where to start. Well, first of all, effective, effective when?
Effective...
I don't know if you can agree with the first part, but...
I can finish it.
Effective...
The termination tell, shall take fa, excuse me, the termination shall take effect at the end of the workday on March 11th, 2016.
Tomorrow.
Unless there's other discussion regarding that.
Well, I guess I would start with, you know, day is, assuming that the motion passes, a day would be very short to transition a lot of the responsibilities and, you know, procedures that we do as board, or as a lake manager does. So, I would have some concerns there. You know, I'd also have some concerns around, you know, continuity of the district, you know, what our staffing plans are. I don't know how much we can talk about the contents of the session, but I would say that, you know, I realize that this probably is born from, you know, the differences of where you see the important skills moving forward versus the important skills of historical, which I believe Paul's done a very good job at providing that technical foundation for us. And if that's, you know, if we're moving forward in a different direction with different skillset requirements, I can truly understand why people would think, you know, entertain this motion. But I think there's, should be some, you know, I would like to be comfortable and understanding, you know, what the, you know, what the plan is, because I, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, everything functions correctly. I want to make sure that, you know, you know, should it not pass, Paul doesn't feel like, you know, like he's in limbo.
Right.
Right? Because I know that, you know, my opinion is that there are things that Paul has done very well.
I think...
And I, and I believe that, you know, he's been exemplary in a technical fashion, and been a rock for, you know, the district in terms of, you know, the administration and data collection and so forth. So, you know, tell us more.
Okay. From my perspective, I think the district's at a critical point, where we're ready to head in a different direction with projects and such. And I would totally agree that Paul has done an exemplary job in many areas. Science, for one. He's, I think, as we discussed, or have discussed, that he's provided clarity in our meetings with our agendas, things like that. We, I feel that, that we need to, this is a critical time, early in the process of moving toward aeration and dredging and some of the projects that we're going. Those will take a year, two years. And if we see that we need a different skillset, the time to make a change is now, early on in the process, rather than later in the process. It takes nothing away from the job Paul has done, and what his skills are. I just think that, that the district can be better served with a different direction at this time. And I think now is the critical time to do it. I can see some kind of a transition period, in all honesty, with Paul, and so that we don't leave big holes. How long that will take, I'm not quite sure. I think there's another resolution that may come forward that would provide us some of that transition that can take place, and as best as possible, provide continuity in our program until we make other arrangements.
Well, I want to say that I think Paul has done a great job, has got the skillset that we needed for the past many years, and has the skillset we need to move forward. Not to mention the experience, the connections with, with the agencies that we have to interact with. Certainly, I'm sure Dr. Horn would be pleased to have someone to work with, with Paul's technical expertise. But, you know, I can count, and I see the handwriting on the wall, so if, if he's gonna be terminated, when you talk about a transition period, I thought I heard a 24-hour transition period, which isn't a transition period. So, I mean, we're, we're ending the budget cycle, for one, for one thing. There's a lot of work involved there that Paul has become very competent at doing, that I don't know of anyone waiting in the wings that's willing to, or is going to assume that obligation. It's not gonna be me. I'm a, I'm a volunteer, I've got my hands full with district work without becoming a part-time manager. So, what's the plan for handling things like the budget process, which is just starting?
Well...
Paying the bills, the monitoring that goes on with, you know, I guess we can have volunteers take lake level and temperature, but there's nutrient sampling that, you know, you've got to, you've got to know how to run a flow meter to determine flow, which, so you can determine nutrient loading, a function of flow. Does the lab work? We have to get set up for summertime monitoring. You have to have supplies. We got, we have interviews arranged for some intern prospects, do we not?
Yes.
We're gonna have some.
Well...
Their meetings are supposed to facilitate. We were just talking about the sewer, the sewer workshop on April 4th or 7th, whatever it is. So, what's the plan for the, for a transition?
Well, I, in all honesty, I think about all those things, too. But in any transition, there's gonna have to be some things that are still, we continue on with, other things that we will leave behind. And as, as a retired member of the Board, since I'm the only retired person here, I would be willing to pick up those little pieces for a temporary time period in the transition until arrangements can be made to secure a new manager, or what other, any other arrangements that might be needed to continue on with, so that the Board doesn't just fall apart.
Well, and I think that, as we discussed last night, that, you know, we can work together to, to figure out what it is that we're looking for in a position, and is it one position, is it two position, is it a contractor and a part-time person that, you know? I don't know that we know the answer to that, but I, I do think that together we can, we can form that and come up with a wish list. And, I mean, I actually, I kinda look forward to that, because I think it will bring the five of us together to, to work together and figure out, okay, what do we agree on? What are our challenges? And move forward from there. And I don't think any of us are, and I certainly know Ken isn't, thinking that this is without challenge.
Well, we need to do this in a public meeting. You know, we just can't all huddle up and decide what we're gonna do and not...
Sure, but we can have a workshop. I mean, it doesn't have to be at a big board table like this. We can have a workshop where these people that are dedicated as much as we are, or some of them more, can be a part of that process as well, and, you know, figure out...
Hey, but what, what is the reason for not saying, we're gonna, we want to terminate the contract effective, you know, 60 days from now, when we can work through these issues in the meantime?
I don't think that's fair.
You don't think it's fair to who?
To Paul.
And why?
Would you want to work under those situations? I wouldn't. And I...
I didn't, well, why don't we ask Paul?
Well, because...
Because you're not gonna give him that option. Okay. But I think it'd be smarter and more beneficial to the district, and Paul's professional enough, he's not gonna throw the district under the bus, because he knows his contract terminates in 60 days. So, it's not that kind of situation.
No, and I don't, I, I'm not insinuating that, I'm, and more insinuating that I think it's unfair to ask Paul to work in that, in that environment. I would not want to do it. 60 days is a long time.
Well, if you're, if you're gonna leave it up to Paul, then let's leave it up to Paul.
I'm not leaving it up to Paul.
Well, okay. Then you're not...
I, I'm making a decision as a professional of how I would want to be treated, and that's the best I can do.
Well, no, you could do better. You could ask, if your concern is Paul, then you could ask Paul what...
My concern is the professional, the professional, don't put words in my mouth, Brian. My concern is that what we have been elected to do, and to handle it professionally...
It's better off of having someone to make, to be able to handle the trends, or having a manager in place continuously, rather than have, you know, unqualified and inexperienced non-professionals trying to step in and, you know, put their fingers in the dyke for an, for an unknown period of time, before we can hire somebody else.
Well, in, in, in my opinion, the transitions are gonna be hard, no matter what. And there's gonna be things that are, that Paul currently does that can't be done by a volunteer stepping in and providing assistance to the nuts and bolts of trying to keep the district afloat. And then, in the process, finding the person that we believe will lead us into the future with our projects, and the leadership that, that we feel is important as we move forward into these projects. And we, most of these projects are a year, two years down the line to where we can see the results of that. If we prolong this process any further, we get deeper and deeper into that, and it's more and more difficult to bring somebody on and up to speed than it is to do it upfront. And I think from our conversations that we've had, that we agree that we are at a, at a crossroads here. We're, we're ready to take on something. And we believe, I believe, that although Paul has done a fabulous job with the science and a whole bunch of other things that he's learned in the 10, in almost the 10 years or 10-plus years, that if we take this step now, we'll be better served in the long run.
Better s...
Better served as a district, and we will be able to achieve the results that we desire.
Well, I think we'd be better served if we had a manager for the next 60 days while we pu, while we publish ads, advertisements for qualified people to apply, to interview, to, and to consider, rather than, I can see where we might be wanting to rush to judgment over a particular applicant, because we don't have anybody doing the job, or we have, don't have a professional doing the job anyway.
Well, if we look at even Dr. Horn's next opportunity to look at what he's putting together, that's almost 60 days away.
Well, that's...
So, we're not doing the stuff that, you know what I'm saying, Brian? You hear what I'm saying? We're, we're 60 days away from...
I hear your sense. That makes a lot of sense to me.
Well, I, I would, I would like to see, as we go forward to the termination, some sort of transition where, I mean, we need to get all of, certainly all the things that, the passwords, the, you know, all of the different things on how to, that the nuts and bolts that will keep us afloat for the next 60 days or so, that we're looking for a new manager, or however we design that. But I think we can do it in that time, and I think we'll be better served in...
Well, why not keep 'em on board during that phase?
I, I'm in agreement...
And actually devote yourself to actually looking for somebody else, instead of having to worry about the nuts and bolts of operating the district, and including the budget process.
I'm in agreement with Tina, that it's not fair to Paul, it's not fair to anybody. If you, it just, in my mind, it doesn't sit well.
I think it's fair to the district to have a manager for the next 60 days, rather than not. I don't think it's unfair to Paul. It's his choice. I mean, he could, he could resign if he, as, on the basis of this, your motion and this discussion, or he could choose to stay on for 60 days, or some other period of time, but some transitional period.
You know, I guess at the end of the day, you, you know, it's your motion, we'll see where it goes, but, you know, I, I'm in agreement that, you know, I have lots of colleagues that have been transitioned over the last few years, who train their replacements, and they've done it over 60, 90 days, all the time. And they're expected to be a professional and transition their duties on their way, on their way to a new position in life. But, you know, I'll say, you know, if you're gonna take the responsibility for, for, you know, pulling that together in the operation of the district, then it's gonna be on, on you as the person who's stepping into those shoes. And I hope you know what you're stepping into, because I know that Paul's got lots of stuff that...
Oh, I know.
...that happens to operate the district, you know, within the guidelines and the bounds of what we're formed under, and we have a lot of, you know, a lot of stuff going on, so...
Right.
It's, you know, not to be taken lightly. I mean, we don't know how long it'll take to find, or define what it is our new model's gonna be. So, you know, it's stepping into the unknown.
It is.
Ken has put, I, I'll tout your, toot your horn or whatever, but he's put a lot of time and effort into, you know, thought of this and, and the what-ifs, and I can't remember George's last name from special districts, he's been in contact with him. George has volunteered to, to help us through that transition period, which was one of the big hurdles, because those are, I mean, you're...
the big hurdles, because those are, I mean, your concerns are all the concerns that I've, I've waded through too, because I, I don't have time to, you know, have another full-time job. I definitely, you know, expect to take on some of the responsibility, and it's going to take some time to interview and, and for us to get together in a workshop, and yeah, there's some extra time involved. I think it's time well spent, and, and I have complete faith in Kent and all of us.
Well, and, and also the Small Districts Association, when, special, excuse me, Special Districts Association, when I've been in contact with them, they said that they would be more than willing to help us transition through this period. I think there's some unknowns, David, honestly, but I'm willing to step into those unknowns.
Well, I, I just, you know, I want to say that, you know, I think that when, when you talk about being unfair to Paul, and, or professionally unfair, you know, as, as much as I hate to say this, I think the conversation that we're having right now in this forum is, is a huge challenge, and Paul's doing a very good job of holding his head up, and, you know, I think if there's nothing else to say, I think you just need to get over, get on with your, with the vote and see where we land and move, move forward from, from what you want to do.
And, and I, I'd like to say to Paul, I have the utmost respect for you, I've, I've expressed that numerous times, and you know that, so I know this is a difficult thing for anybody. It has nothing personal attached to it.
I would just say, I, I think we should be stepping into as few unknowns as possible, not just embracing the unknown for some nebulous concern for Paul, I think we should need to be concerned about the district. But, okay, I'm done.
Any other discussion?
I have a few words and directed towards Paul and his 10 years of developing his professional foundation. And being in the construction trade, it's very common that buildings move and foundations get rebuilt. So, in, in that aspect, I just wanted to say thanks to Paul for everything you've laid out, foundation-wise for the board and the direction that the district has gone. But I just want to extravagant, extravagantize the amount of energy that the board members put forth as volunteers. Not only is your position monumental, I think, as, as a board member, the five people that run this district have even a greater responsibility as to guiding the district in a positive direction. So, with that being said, I want to keep the direction positive and move on with a different style of management. So, that's all I have.
And I'd like to ask one other thing. Paul, Paul, if, if we move forward with this, do you have, I know that tomorrow was a vacation day for you, do you have a day for, sort of, are you already planned out and, just asking?
I, I have a day for you, it won't be in the next day or so, but it'll be soon.
Do you have-
That's your decision, yeah.
Do you have-
I can provide.
A couple of, several days that we could spend together, if that, if we, if we, I'm, I'm asking if that is possible, because there is some things that need to be taken care of.
Yeah, I think, I think we can take care of a lot of things in quick order, if this is your decision.
Is it, is it, is it going to be in the near future? I, I mean, I'm just asking.
Within the, the month, absolutely.
All right, thank you. All right, let's call for a vote. All in favor of the motion on the board, state aye.
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 Aye. All opposed?
No.
Oh.
Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion, since the district will be without a manager, I'd like to make a motion to temporarily appoint Director Kent Norris to assume the needed duties to operate the district. These duties could include picking up the mail, paying bills, answering emails, returning phone calls, and developing the budget. Temporary appointment will be made without any compensation, and until such time, a new manager can be hired and/or other arrangements can be made.
I'll second that motion. Discussion?
The only concern I have with it would be whether or not the, I think you probably, we probably have to separate the budget officer appointment, we probably have to reappoint him directly as a budget officer in a separate motion.
Have it as a separate motion for us?
Yes.
So I can-
I, we can leave it as is and follow it up with a motion to do the-
Appoint him as a budget officer.
Yes.
Okay. Who's the second?
I thought he can't be seconded.
Is the, is there a second?
I second you.
So, are you going to man the office for regular office hours?
That wouldn't be my intent, it would be to visit, make sure to pick up the mail, answer phones.
And have the phone forwarded.
I, I think we-
All of those types of things.
Why don't we post limited office hours during the period?
Right.
And then, you know, have some regular hours that you'd be there.
I'm sorry, but I need to say something. If you're being nominated, you cannot second the motion, you will have to have someone else second that motion, because you're being nominated into that position, so you're actually saying, oh yeah, you're, you understand what I'm saying.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I, I, I would think that I could have limited office hours to try to take, pick up mail, take care of correspondence, those types of things, make sure the bills are paid.
I mean, phones and emails can be forwarded.
Yeah. Are we, we're going to forward the phones to your home?
No, I'll stop by.
Well, I think the, I think the district pays for Paul's cell phone, so-
Right, right.
I would assume that you would inherit that phone number.
Do we, do we pay for your phone, or do we give you reimbursement for your phone, Paul?
There's a $50 compensation as part of the bill.
Ah, okay, sorry.
So that's your phone?
That's your phone.
And your number that you'll keep?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you're not-
So the, the phones will come into the district office, just like they do now, and-
Yeah, okay.
And your cell phone number's not published, is it, Paul?
It's on my card, it's actually published.
Oh, it is published, okay.
Can we have a second? I'm done.
Any other comment?
Right.
Okay, call for a vote. All in favor of-
Aye.
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 You probably need to abstain, Ken.
I'm going to abstain.
All abstain, okay? Motion-
I abstain as well.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Kent Norris as the budget officer for the 2016 budget.
I'll second that.
Call for a vote. All in favor of making Kent Nor, Director Norris the budget officer?
Aye.
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 Abstain. Motion passes.
Um-
Do we have any other?
Keeping on this line and, and trying to address the continuity and transition period, is it a bad time to ask to schedule a workshop?
I think we should do that as-
Probably, I would like to try and do one next week.
Okay.
I need to look at my calendar, so let's-
Do you have it?
Uh, I don't have my work calendar here with me.
Okay.
So if we could, I'll, you know, if we could come up with a couple of options, I think we just do it down at the community college, get the conference room like we had last night, if we could just make it one evening.
How, how much publication do we need?
We need 24 hours.
Oh, that's it, okay.
We need to post it in our normal places, so.
Okay.
If I remember correctly.
So do we want to throw out a couple of dates, David, and then you can check your calendars, since we're on TV and we have an audience, or do you want to wait?
I'm going March 16 to 24.
So-
So 14, 15 would be an option for next week, then?
That's Tuesday.
14, 15 is Monday, Tuesday, or moving into the following week, 28 through 31? After Brian's back.
How about we try for next Thursday?
Brian's not here.
Oh, you're both gone. So it's really, it's either Monday-
It's Monday or Tuesday of next week, or moving to the week of the 28.
Uh, we got to, we'll find a way to do it on Monday night, then.
Monday, March 14.
Yeah, I, I think we need to.
Yes.
I agree.
Is it generally-
6 o'clock at the community college, I'll call and check on a date or a room possibility?
Yeah, 6 o'clock's fine.
Okay.
So the, the purpose of the workshop is to kind of decide how the district's going to be managed for a period of time, while we look for a new manager?
Well, I think we should discuss what we're looking for, so we can begin that process, similar to, you know, what we discussed last night, of, you know, I think we need to develop what, what we're really looking for.
Yeah.
And I, you know-
Sooner we get on it, the better, because it's not going to be happening overnight, so.
Right.
Yep.
Paul, I want to say thank you for your service.
Thank you very much for your service, Paul, you did a great job, sorry to see you go.
Paul, when, as we move forward and try to do some coordination here of some days, how best to do that with you?
You can reach me by cell phone.
Are you, are you available tomorrow at all?
Yeah, I can go tonight.
Do some, a couple of things after the meeting?
That'd be good.
Great, all right. I, I, I appreciate you, Paul, and I wish you the best. Any other board comments? All right. You weren't here at the beginning where I said we were changing, where we only public commented in the beginning? Sorry, you, sorry, sorry, Ren.
Why is it, why are we just, I'm coming up here and you're not here?
Oh, yank.
Oh, great, great, thanks, Ren.
Did you send it in electronically, Ren?